I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and just as for all.
Presentations, MHS Student Advisory Committee presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to welcome Heidi De Persio as the student representative to the school committee this year. Welcome Heidi. The report this evening, if I could have the students come up, we have Tim Goleger is going to talk about band camp, 11th grader. Madison Hediger, 12th grader, will talk about the new schedule at the high school. And Alicia Beebe is at a soccer game this evening. She emailed me to let me know that. So, go ahead, Mr. Goleger.
Thank you. So, good evening. My name is Timothy Goleger. Along with being the 11th grade representative for this committee, I'm president and tenor section leader of Marlborough High School's acapella choir. I play trumpet in the school's marching band and I play French horn in the wind ensemble. I'm very much looking forward to keeping all of you updated about events that bring pride to Marlborough High School, its students and faculty. So, onto tonight. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you guys about band camp and the marching band. So, what is band camp? Band camp is a five-day, 30-hour-long boot camp, if you will, that prepares the Marlborough High School marching band and color guard for the upcoming football season. It occurs the week before Labor Day and on paper, everything looks really easy and simple, but trust me, there's a lot to it. Reporting at the high school at nine o'clock in the morning, students must be prepared for a long day at work. We are outside for the first three hours of the day, working on everything related to marching, what foot to start on, how big your step should be, how to stay in a line, et cetera. After we learn about the fundamentals of marching, we can start to have the fun. The fun being the halftime show. The remainder of the time outside is spent trying to figure out where you're supposed to go, not being able to figure out where you're supposed to go on the field, and then bugging your drum majors for help. That was the case for me, anyway. It was different for a lot of people. After what feels like 100 runs of each set, the glorious words "band room" one hour come out of Mr. Piazza's mouth. After lunch, all the musicians gather in room 166 for the next part of our day: music. The next couple of hours are spent in sectional rehearsals, which are rehearsals that involve one type of instrument. For example, I'm in the trumpet section, so I'd attend the trumpet sectional. We start to crack, we start to crack the pieces and we start to land the pieces. I didn't say that right. You get what I'm trying to say. For the last half hour, the entire band gets together and runs through what we learned in sectionals. When three o'clock hits, the musicians go back home and falling, they fall asleep promptly at 7:00 PM, according to Mr. Piazza, in order to prepare for the next day. Repeat for five days. By the end of the week, the Marlborough High School marching band was able to perform the national anthem, a few little pieces that are played from the bleachers during the football games, and a 10-minute halftime show. This is no small feat and I'm elated that everybody put in the effort that was needed, needed to pull off a successful band camp. So, why is band camp so important to me and why did I decide to talk about it tonight? This was my first year in the band and it really opened my eyes to a side of music that I had never experienced before. It deepened my respect for all the instrumentalists and color guardsmen at the high school, and it also provided me with the opportunity to kindle new friendships and to preserve the ones that were already there. My main objective is to do what I love while simultaneously helping the people around me. Band camp, band camp helped me and marching band continues to help me achieve that goal. Whether that be playing victory in the stands of Keller Field after the football team steals a win or complimenting Jared Billencieri on the high C because there's no way that I could ever hit that note. Marching band continually provides opportunities to be aware of how you work in a group and to better yourself as a person. So, thank you for your time tonight. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions from the committee. Senator.
Sorry, one quick one. How many students actually participate in athletics as well as being involved in band? Do you have an idea? I mean, roughly, not like, you know, it's gotta be 14 or something like that.
Exactly. So, I don't have, I don't have an idea. I know that Madison is, does both, so she might have a better idea.
Yeah, I would say like 30 to 40.
Right.
Thirty to 40. And, and how does that work? I mean, has it, has it worked out okay? Because, I mean, it is, as you were just explaining, it's a pretty intense week for music. And that's often right when a lot of the pre-seasons are happening for athletics.
So, athletics and, and band really kind of do overlap. You know, we have Thursday rehearsals after school every, every Thursday. And the athletes do get to leave at three o'clock because they do have commitments to, I don't know what you call them, practices. I was gonna say rehearsals. I'm not, I'm not a sports kid.
[laughing]
So, they, they do collide, but Mr. Piazza does make it work. There, there was a rehearsal at one point where like 30 kids left to go to a track meet and it was, like, including two drum majors. It was, it was just a bad situation. But, they do collide and we do have to sacrifice some time for the athletes. But, Mr. Piazza tries to keep the band as intact as he can.
Right. Well, and I think it's good to understand, you know, that there are kids that can participate in both and actually athletics and music are supportive of trying to help, you know, the teams and the groups to compete appropriately. So, great. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
[applause]
Sorry about that.
It's okay. So, my name is Madison. I'm a senior at Marlborough High School and I'm gonna talk about the new schedule at the high school. I'm not sure if any of you have heard about it. It's pretty crazy. But, um, going, being a junior in the fall when they decided to do the pilot program, and Heidi can attest to us, there was a lot of pushback from our class. We were not happy about it. We were very angry that this was happening our senior year. We were upset that our lunches were gonna change. We were upset that the classes were gonna be an hour long. We just weren't happy. But, I can say that we're about a month into school and I think it has really helped. I think having hour-long classes has helped in my four AP classes. I have a more amount of time to take tests. That's helped. I have more time with my teachers. Dropping a period every day has been helpful because then you don't have to do your homework for some classes every night. That's been great. So, I think that it's taught us that change is good and that even though we had a huge pushback on it, that it's good and it's gonna work out well, even though there are still some bumps to figure out.
That's great. Question, Senator.
Sorry, open the door. So, you mentioned you've got four AP classes.
Yes.
Which, congratulations. That's great for you to be taking that kind of challenge. How, how did you find, I mean, you seem to be pretty lucky that you were able to get four APs. How was your schedule? Like, did you feel like you were able to get what you wanted and needed?
This was the first year at the high school that I've gotten everything I wanted in my schedule.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I felt very happy about that.
[laughing] That's good. Okay, great. Thank you.
Bo Nandia.
So, when you're doing the pilot project, I remember there was big signs up on every floor and people directing traffic. I mean, is it, everyone gets it now?
We, there's still signs.
You still have signs on every floor?
There's still signs. I still had to check the schedule for today.
Yeah.
To double check. But, I think people have, like, it's become more of a second nature, but people still have their schedules. I still have my schedule because it is a very strange rotation because of, like, part-time teachers and everything. But, it does help and it does make sense and that's working out great.
Awesome. Thank you.
Other questions from the committee? Any other questions? Thank you very much.
You have a nice night.
You too.
Thank you.
Thanks, Madison.
Heidi, what do you have to add? Anything?
Uh, yeah. I didn't want to like the new schedule. Like Madison said, like the pilot. I, I was like, no, I want the same schedule. So, I definitely went into it more closed-minded than I should've. But, I, I do like the hour-long periods. In an English class, having more time for like a timed writing and stuff, I appreciate. And I do feel like it's, I'm falling into the groove a bit and I like it more.
Great, great.
Thanks.
Any questions from the committee? Thank you all very much. See you next month, next course.
Soon.
Soon.
Soon. Four more times, four more times this year.
The MHS app design.
Thank you. Over the summer, four rising seniors, STEM students from Marlborough High School, worked on a mobile conference app with Geisel software. And this, this is an incredible feat. They spent over 1,000 cumulative hours developing code and got the recognition of the lieutenant governor and probably have started their own business from what I've seen with several other folks asking for your help. So, I'd like to call up Megan Fenneff, who is 10th grade STEM teacher, who will introduce and talk a little bit about the work of Syrah, Alyssa, Megan, and Florence.
So, welcome. I'm really pleased and very proud as an educator to be here to formally introduce these amazing MHS seniors to you. Flo Ning, Syrah Khatatch, Michelle Nie, and Alyssa O'Leary. So, they, as Ms. Gerilic said, spent more than 1,000 hours combined of their own summertime, which is unreal, incredibly valuable. They worked on creating, editing thousands and thousands and thousands of lines of code, which is a very tedious process with, I might add, very limited to no experience in coding. So, they really just followed their passion in creating an app for the Metro West Women's Conference that has a value, a market value of over $25,000, which is wow. So, that in itself is remarkable. So, I'd also like to add, as an educator and a project manager in the role, it's really gratifying to see the power in uniting the passion of the students with education, industry, and the community outreach is just unreal. So, without further ado, I'd like to invite them up to share a little bit of their experience in the project. So, Syrah will start us up.
Hello, everyone. I'm Syrah. And so, so, so we met up with Geisel and working with them was such a great experience because they were like really like helpful and really nice to us. And even though, like, what Ms. Fenneff said, like, none of us had, like, any experience with coding. And so, they gave us an opportunity to learn some of the coding by going on like Code Academy, Stack Overflow, and School Tutoral. And like, we used like all of these three amazing like websites to help us build this app and learn the, the coding behind all of this, and like any type of app. And so, first, like, we, like, we started like brainstorming of what was gonna be on the app before. We didn't have any of this. We only just wanted like what the Metro West women wanted. Like, they wanted, um, only like a schedule and, and like a schedule where we can like star each one that we, like, each of the women wants and plus a survey. Like, we didn't want like an exhibitor or sponsor page or, or overview. And so, like, throughout the process, we got like the schedule and all of, and the survey. And one, and as we like started learning, like, all this coding stuff, we decided to add an exhibitor page and a sponsor page and, and then, yeah, and we learned, like, we like learned, like, new coding and like JavaScript of like how to like take all the information from like a Excel page and, and transfer to, onto the app. And so, like, our mentors, I forgot to mention, was Liz Semprime plus Ms. Fenneff. And there were, again, there were such amazing mentors because they helped us throughout the whole project. And if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't have created such an amazing app. And so, I would like to introduce Michelle.
So, here in the background, I'm gonna have some of what the app does itself. But, to reiterate what Syrah said, most of us came in with little to no coding experience. And our experience at Geisel was like extraordinary for us because not only were we able to use our skills that we learned in the STEM program, since we all attended STEM, we also got to see the outcome of a project that we worked so hard on and deliver it to people in the real world and then get real feedback on that. So, someone else will talk about this, but I want to reiterate our experience learning from the ground up how to code because often, um, schools won't have much of a comprehensive coding program. So, that doesn't exclude our school. And we had to use our own resources and our own time with the help of our mentors to learn how to bring a white page to what you see here. And with that, I want to introduce Flo Ning.
Hi. So, yeah, after weeks of planning our app and creating our app, we finally got to go to the Metro West Women's Conference where we got to present it to over 500 women, which is pretty amazing. Like, the moment we got there, everyone was just thanking us and calling us their, we were like their heroes. And I was like, us? Like, high schoolers? I was like, wow. Yeah. I thought it was pretty cool because just sitting there, it was an amazing experience. And everyone was talking about, like, their personal stories and all the lessons that we learned. It was something that we could just bring with us and something to remember. And we got to meet so many amazing women, like the lieutenant governor, Karen Pletto. She invited us to the state house in front of everyone. And I thought that was pretty cool. But, yeah, it was a good experience.
So, after our conference, we decided that we wanted to stay as a team since we had, like, a really good time over the summer, working together and working as a team. And we were all friends like prior to the project. So, we decided that we would set up contacts for people to come reach out to us because a bunch of people approached us about, hey, do you mind if I have this app idea? Would you mind making it for me? And some people even offered to pay us, which is a little crazy because that makes us sound really professional. It's just high school students. So, actually at the conference, while we're on break, I was like, wow, all these people are gonna ask us for contacts and we didn't do that yet. So, I made a lovely email, Facebook page, and a Twitter for our app team. Self-promotion a little bit there. But, if there's any questions.
Any questions from the committee? Mr. Bo Nandia.
Thank you. So, my, one's a comment. I actually know people that were at the conference and I spoke to them before I knew that it was you guys that made the app. And three people told me that the, the conference itself went so smoothly and was so awesome because of this app. And then I found out it was you guys that did it, which was so amazing, so great. So, you know, this is how, you know, Steve Jobs started and all these other, you know, huge people, right? They did stuff in their garages over the summer. So, you guys are really onto something here. So, this is really, really great. Love it. Thanks for sharing it with us.
That's also funny because my brother just randomly came up to me, like, he messaged me. He's in college. And he's like, hey, nice job on the app. And I never told him about it. So, I was like, how did you know? And he was like, oh, my friend sent it to me because he follows this woman who went to the conference. So, I was like, ooh, okay.
It's really great.
Other questions for the committee? Well, congratulations and thank you very much.
Oh, actually, I do have another question, maybe more directed to Ms. Fenneff, but...
I already finished that part.
Sorry, sorry. Reopening that section of the meeting. So, I mean, I know we have an AP Java class at the high school. I mean, is, are you guys gonna take it this year? You've already, like, rocked it.
They're enrolled, yeah.
They're teaching it.
Well, Alyssa, Alyssa took it last year.
Yes.
But, the others enrolled this year.
Yeah, okay. So, um, you know, we need more of this. Oh, and I just thought of something else. So, we, we march in the Labor Day parade and, you know, it was an election year, so the governor came and Karen Pletto was in the parade and stuff. And another person came along with them and she was the new, she had only been on the job for like a month as, what is she?
Secretary of Workforce.
Yeah, Labor and Workforce Development, the secretary for the state. And so, I had an opportunity to walk with her for a while. And I was saying, you know, you really need to come to Marlborough and see what we're doing, you know, with the STEM program and the, the pathways programs that we have with Quinn Sigeman and all this stuff. And she specifically asked me if we do a lot with coding. And I knew that we had, I didn't know that you guys were doing this amazing thing, but, um, who knows? Maybe she was at that conference. But, she, um, you know, she was saying, because she came from industry and she was talking about coding out in the world. And I said that I knew we had the AP Java class and that there were opportunities to do it, but...
There, there are some. I mean, in the, in the STEM program, in the 10th grade specifically, one of our projects, which introduced some of them to, to coding, it was to actually develop an app. It's not nearly to the level of this and all the coding. It's much more of an introductory phase and a more of a drag-and-drop approach to introduce and, and kind of get the interest and see who's there. And then we try to pair them with industry partners, which is actually how we started with Geisel.
Yeah, I was gonna say, how did you even get to that?
Yeah, we, Geisel started, we did an out, a community outreach project a few years ago. And they have slowly started mentoring and coming and getting involved in projects. And now it's led to this level of partnership, which is amazing.
Amazing.
Yeah.
Awesome. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Spring 2018 MCAS testing, as part of the transition to full statewide computer-based testing, students in grades four, five, seven, and eight will be expected to take the test via computer-based format in the spring. You'll notice a few, a few grades are missing, but for us, we are doing all computer-based testing again because it was the suggestion that those who did it in 2017 are expected to implement computer-based testing again in 2018. And we had relatively few problems with this. So, we're, we're hopeful for another good season of testing. Also, the high school will be testing, doing some pilots in the spring and more information to follow on that. Speaking of apps, the mobile, the MPS mobile app launch has been successful. We had in the first, from September 5th to the 11th, 583 downloads. It was, as of the 18th, 806 downloads. Late breaking news, as of yesterday, it was 933. And I have to thank Raina, who was at the football game the other evening, pressing people to take the sticker and download the app. We want you all to download the app, teachers, students, parents, staff, everyone. Interesting trivia, the top 10 first up, top news, people checked off top news, Activity Stream, and so on. You can read the list. And interesting to me, the very last, the least clicked, was bus routes, which I think gives us a good indication that there are no issues, with the exception perhaps of construction in the city, which is, is creating other issues. I want to thank Mrs. Matthews for the suggestions she's made, most of which I think have been incorporated into the, the app to make it better. We'll continue to promote this, hopefully get us well over 1,000, looking to 2,000, Raina, right, is our goal, double that. Thank you. Middlesex Partnerships for Youth, on September 15th, I attended, along with other superintendents and police chiefs from 11 communities where Cummings Foundation has properties, a, a symposium where we talked about what the goal would be in applying for $100,000 Cummings Foundation grant. That was really wonderful to connect with other communities and police chiefs and find out what's going on. More to follow on what the final grant proposal will be. On September 19th, the...
I'm sorry, who's the contact on that?
The contact on that is Margie Daniels for here, me. And the police chief was not able to make it with me, but he and police fire chief Breen did accompany me to Lowell on the 19th for a Middlesex superintendent and chief's breakfast at the invitation of District Attorney Marion Ryan. This was a wonderful event where a lot of legislators, as well as the district attorney herself, addressed this group. She spoke mostly about efforts to combat the opioid crisis. And you can read through some of the things that she spoke about. Mostly, it was about the intersection of schools with public safety and how it's become such a concern. It was, despite the long trek up to Lowell, it was a really interesting, interesting meeting. Enclosed in your packet, it's that time of year again for performance goals. The superintendent is no exception. My goals, however, are public. What I did this year to simplify things was to take the three district goals that you saw on opening day, if you were there, and they're also on the website. These three goals, I thought, fit neatly into professional practice, student learning, and district goals. So, you know, if I'm expecting principals and others to model and to derive their goals from me, then I need to derive my goals from the district goals. So, I thought that made some sense. And I benchmarked out action steps and benchmarks that relate to each of the three goals. I am very happy to answer any questions if you, if you have them. And in the packet as well, you have your MAS-C resolutions. The agenda item is not here right now. You'll be voting on that on October 10th, but Patty and I said we would put it in the packet, even though you may have all gotten a mailing or a flyer about it, to have them here for, you know, for public consumption as well, for you to familiarize yourself with the, with the resolutions. That concludes my report.
Questions from the committee? Any questions from the committee?
I, I actually had a question. It's kind of not from your report. It's from, from the students, the advisory committee. It also, it noted all the new students. Actually, maybe Heidi knows the incidence. And then it says the regional student advisory committee? What's...
So, they vote for that every year, school committee, right? A school, sorry, student council?
That's, yeah, that's students from student council that go to a different school. I think it's like once every other month or once a month and just meet with other student council kids and talk about stuff that's going on region-wide.
Interesting. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Mr. Bergeron.
I'll ask you later. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna give a couple of quick updates. I did say in my report that the bid for transportation is due on September 28th. Late breaking news. We're gonna be a little bit delayed on that because we had to write an addendum, but it should be in the first week or two of October. The good news is we're doing it in October. So, we'll have plenty of time to review the bids and make decisions about extending our contract. I did get information about contracts that have gone out to bid in the past year. And I'll be finding out the next school committee meeting, so we can take a look at that. Most of the prices that I'm seeing in, in that document are between 345 and 380 per bus. We're currently paying 290. So, quite a difference, just so you have a heads up. Earlier in the year, the school committee asked me to create a document about the cafeteria budget, just so we can take a look at it and you can understand where the money comes in, what do we receive, and then how do we spend the money out of the revolving account. So, I created a document and attached it to my report for you to see the specific items of where we get the revenue. Most of our revenue is from state and federal reimbursement. Actually, more than, more than two-thirds of it is from that area. And about 500,000 is just from meal sales. Looking at the expense side, about 66% of our expenses is in two areas, where it be labor and food costs. The rest of the expenses are, you know, our custodial fee for cleaning the kitchens, capital costs to make sure that we are replacing equipment each year and staying on top of that, supplies, repair of the equipment that we additionally have, and then the funds that we pay Airmark for managing and doing all the procurement and all the backend work of reporting to the state for us. So, I just wanted to give you kind of a graphical overview of the food service budget. But, something that's not included in those amounts are the benefits figures that the city pays for and does not go against the revolving account. So, the revolving account itself is just paying strictly for salaries for employees in the account. But, the city bears 100% of the cost of the health care. So, I additionally put down what it's costing this year for the city to provide the health care benefits, dental care, and also pay the Medicare tax. So, for all employees, the city matches the, the employee's contribution for Medicare tax. It's 1.45% of payroll. So, if you look at those items, that is the amount above and beyond that the city is paying for this function. I was not able to get the remainder of the numbers, which we're still working on, but there are additional expenses. And I think it's very important to notate that. So, for example, in the city's budget, the city every year has to pay for pension costs. They, and that is an ever-increasing number. The city has to fund our, what they call OPEB, and that's post-employment benefits for when the time between an employee retires, they are still on health plans. And even when they go on Medicare, Medicaid, they're still usually on another plan that the city provides for what they usually refer to as the donut hole, where you have prescription plans. So, there is lifetime insurance costs for each employee that have to be accounted for. So, those costs aren't factored in because that's an actuarial study. It's tough to pin down exactly what each person owes for costs like that. But, I do have to make you aware, those costs exist and it is quite a large liability for the city.
$125 million.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's $125 million. And a portion of that is, since we are two-thirds of the employee... portion of that is, since we are two-thirds of the employee, of the employees in the city, you can imagine two-thirds of that OPEB is cost that the, um, that we have to pay for, uh, to continue with our, our benefits for employees after they retire. So, I just wanted to give you an update on this. Um, I'm, I'm hoping at the next meeting that I can present even more information, because we have done an analysis of the CEP program, which is the Community Eligibility Provision, which we've talked about, about the free lunch for all program through the federal government, and I have some findings on that, and I'll have a recommendation. So I'm hopeful at the next meeting that I'll have a short, might be a presentation, I might just write it as a memo for you, um, and be able to talk about that. But just, not to spoil it, but just to give you a heads up, it doesn't look like CEP, the hook, the hook is, it doesn't look like CEP is the right choice for us. Um, so, I just wanted to give you a quick update on that. Um, additionally, I wanted to include the first food service balances, uh, since we have changed our policy. Um, I wanted to additionally give you last year's, because if we're going to benchmark this or, uh, look at it, I want you to be able to see where we were exactly the same time last year. And although the balances are a little bit higher, you see them at 1779. I can report as of today, which is six days later, they're only at 1,800, so they haven't moved much beyond that. Um, I talked to the food service manager before the meeting tonight. They're working very hard. A majority of the balance of the high balances are kindergarten students, and we're working with those families to get used to our new, uh, systems, get them used to, uh, the payment methods, and, and, and get ahead of that curve. But there wasn't a huge difference between the balances. Obviously, I'm gonna keep a very strict eye on this, because I wanna make sure that, uh, this does not get out of control, or doesn't move beyond what we normally do. So at each meeting, I'm gonna try to give you a little bit of a historical analysis of where we were the previous meeting, until we feel comfortable that we're moving in, in, in the right path, because it is a new policy, and I wanna respect that. I'm not sure if there's any questions.
Any questions from the committee? Ms. Matthews.
Two questions for you. One, um, on the bus bid, how many companies requested the bid package?
Um, I believe we had four, um, four companies, and two companies came to the pre-bid meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, First Student and NRT was our current provider.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're hoping to get more than one bid, uh, but based on the pricing that I'm seeing, obviously, we're gonna have a decision at that point, uh, but the pricing is about 25 to 30% more than what we're paying right now, just as the market-
But we still have the option to continue.
The school committee has the sole option to, uh, award the contract for two more years, and not to exceed 2.5% of our current pricing.
2.5 and 25, there's a big difference.
A big difference, yeah. Um, so it's, there, there are, obviously, I, I would like to at least give you the market, so we can make that decision, and we'll have that in plenty of time, well before the budget.
I was gonna say, and at some point, that's gonna become a reality, because in two years-
For two years, right.
You can only push it off for so long.
Absolutely.
Um, and my second question, and I, I know I've had this conversation with you before, but can you refresh my memory as to why, as a non-exempt organization or municipality, we pay meals tax?
We pay, we pay meals tax for adult meals. So what happens is, the, the meals tax portion that you see that we pay on the warrant is the amount of adult meals that we sell in the cafeterias, and generally, our total meals tax is about $2,200 per year. But we, we don't budget it, because every adult meal we sell is at a profit, so it's only bringing in more revenue, because we, we don't budget adult meals.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we still have to remain-
It just seemed like a very strange thing. Okay, thank you.
Can I, can you just remind me, I know we had talked about the, with the bus contract, thinking about doing it with Hudson?
We are doing it with Hudson.
We are doing with Hudson, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's why we have to delay it for two weeks, is that there's a language in the bid that we need to do an addendum for, um, for the rule for award. Our, our language is fine. Their attorney looked at it, they didn't like their language, so they're gonna extend for two weeks. So, just, we have to give all the bidders an equal opportunity to review all the language.
And so, the price point that we're at now, are they at a sim, similar price point? Because we're combining our two contracts, in essence, right?
We, we still reserve-
Or would they just go on to ours?
No, we, we're reserving all of our rights to remain separate. All we're doing is, is combining, um, our dates. If you think about it, we're combining our dates to be the same date, and we have very similar language in our bids. So, each school committee in each community reserves all of their rights on their own to do whatever they feel is appropriate, but we're kind of using our buying power as a whole, because what tends to happen in the industry, this is my opinion, I, I don't have anything to back it up, is that as, as these contracts go one by one, that kind of cuts up the business, and, and there, there isn't as much incentive for bus transportation viders to compete with each other if they know they have so much business. So by going on the same exact date, we, we increase participation and competition.
Excellent.
And also, doesn't Hudson only have one more year on their existing, but we have two?
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Director of Student Services.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, first, I just wanted to commend our students that presented tonight and at last school committee meeting. It's really difficult for us as adults to speak publicly, and I think they did an outstanding job. Um, I first wanted to report, uh, to you on staff, some staffing needs that we've had. We had, uh, a few last-minute resignations, uh, right at the end of the summer, heading into the school year. Uh, we are currently still filling, uh, trying to fill a speech and language pathology position, um, at the high school, and a school psychologist at the high school, as well as a number of, um, behavior tech positions throughout the schools. So we are working diligently on filling those vacancies. Uh, the new ratification of the BT, uh, contract will definitely help with that, and we are also looking towards contracted services, um, in the meantime, for some of those services, uh, to be provided while we're still trying to fill those positions. Also, as part of our reorganization, uh, that happened right, uh, when I had started, we had eight educational team leader positions that we needed to fill over the summer. That was quite a challenge, but we were able to do it, and I'm happy to report that all eight positions were filled for the start of the school year. And I'm really excited about this group that we have, um, you know, both short-term and long-term, to see what we're going to be able to do with Marlboro Public Schools and what we can do for our students. We have an amazing team. Uh, we now have administrators in each building that have solid knowledge of special ed laws and procedures, but on top of that, they have great potential to be able to grow and develop as leaders, so I'm really looking forward to, um, nurturing that and having that role develop. More importantly, though, uh, the, the staff that we hired have great personalities. Uh, they're collaborative and they have, they're compassionate, and they are really helping to build those relationships, um, positive relationships with both parents, teachers, and students. So, and that's really important to me. That's the basis for everything else, is to make sure we have positive relationships. So, over the summer and into the start of the school year, I had several meetings with our educational team leaders, as well as our administrative office support, and we were able to streamline, uh, a number of procedures, uh, that have been in place, in order to reduce some of the redundant paperwork, so that the teachers can focus on being in the class with the students versus, um, completing paperwork. But also, with that streamline, we were able to, uh, reduce the amount of time that IEPs are going out to parents, as well as reducing the amount of times that translated documents are going out to parents. We've had, uh, a number of IEPs, uh, that have been able to be presented to parents shortly after the meeting, um, before they even leave. There's been, um, just very few minor changes. Parents have been able to leave with their final copy, and we've had, uh, translated IEPs been able to be sent out to parents within five days of the meeting. Uh, and that's really important, to be able to have, um, have those parents have a document within their, within their language to be able to understand, so that they have, you know, that same 30 days to be able to consider and have, have it be in, in a language that they can understand. Uh, I had an opportunity to visit schools during the first couple of weeks of school, and I'm really looking forward to continuing frequent visits, um, throughout the year, but especially in the fall, so that I can continue, continue to meet with, uh, principals, other administrators in the buildings, as well as the staff, um, in the buildings. I also have a, a CPAC meet and greet that is coming up in October, so that I can work with, um, parents and getting feedback from them as well, so that I can develop a one, two, three-year strategic, strategic plan, uh, that's also in line with our district goals for special education. One, uh, initiative that we have going on right now, uh, that was started, uh, in the spring prior to, to myself coming on board, is a, an intensive Wilson, Level One Wilson Certification Program, and we have seven teams, teachers throughout the district who are participating in that. Uh, they did a three-day, uh, full three-day training, uh, initial workshop, and then after that, they had a one-day training on the first steps on being able to, um, pick, choose their student and be able to work with that student, um, through a year-long, and this is extra hours that they need to put in, uh, and also meet periodically after school throughout the year. That's going to be a tremendous resource, not only for our special education students, but any struggling readers, because we have general ed, uh, teachers, as well as special ed teachers who are participating in that. Uh, what, and one of my philosophies, um, going forward in what I had practiced in Dudley Charlton is, get, the stronger our general education is, the better our special education students will be, and the less special education that you need. So, really focusing on the needs of all of our students, and an emphasis on that. I, I don't wanna work in a silo of just special education if they're all of our students. Um, and while attention will be given to supporting, uh, special education, counseling and nursing, um, and continuing current initiatives, uh, both John Fleischer, Fletcher, the Assistant Special Ed Director and myself, uh, our, our goal this year really is focused on the high school, and, uh, really analyzing the, some of the programs that we have up there that we feel, um, are a priority, that need to be strengthened. Those include our pathways program and our, uh, postgraduate program, as well as a transition specialist that we have, um, that worked primarily with our post-grad students, and having her role expand to working with first, um, 12th grade special education students, no matter what type of program they're in, because some of them need help with transitioning to either two-year colleges, four-year colleges, um, and other adult services that are out there, and then having her work towards, um, helping with transition services with juniors, and then working their way, her way down to, um, freshmen, but priority would be with seniors, and then, um, reduction of time, uh, for the younger grades. Sorry. Um, also, uh, with, within, uh, the curriculum at the high school, we also wanna focus on rigor and relevance for our special education students, as well as, um, all of our struggling, um, students, uh, so that we can get, um, all of their achievement up to, up to stuff. And lastly, uh, it's not in my, um, it's not in my report, but, um, I did wanna also mention, as some of you know, um, a friend and colleague who I had worked with for 10 years in Dudley Charlton, um, tragically was killed last week. Um, he was the teacher that was, um, hit on Route 20 while he was riding his bike. He was an assistant principal, uh, at Dudley Middle School for seven years, and I had worked with him as principal of Dudley Middle this past, um, for the past three years. In June, he had, um, resigned from that to go back to teaching, and he, uh, took a teaching position at Charlton Middle, so he could spend more time with his kids. Um, he has one in kindergarten, uh, sorry, one in first grade and twins in kindergarten. And we had his memorial service, uh, this past Saturday at Shepherd Hill. Uh, in the auditorium, we had, uh, there was over a thousand, uh, thousand attendees. Uh, there was, um, family and friends, colleagues, staff, um, students, and former students. And, um, throughout the memorial service, one of the things, um, that every, you know, we had a lot of speakers, and his, so his name is John Pear, and he truly lived by three things that were repeated over and over by everybody who had spoken that day. And the three things, I, I heard him all the time saying these, and it wasn't, you know, it's not until now that you really think, wow, but, um, they were, um, one thing that he always said was, you only have this day once, so make it count. And he also, um, always said, take care of our students and be better. So, he was non-judgmental, whether, you know, whenever a student made a mistake or a teacher made a mistake, he's like, that's okay, we just wanna be better. And he instilled that in his teachers and his students, and he had such a huge impact in the community. And I just wanted to share that, because, you know, in thinking about that, that's something that I want to aspire to myself, but also bring that to our staff here in Marlboro, and really have them focus and, and have our, our motto be students first, in everything that we decide and do. So, thank you. Any questions?
Any questions from the committee? Ms. Sinacy.
Um, thank you. I appreciate the thorough report. Um, it's, it's a pleasure getting that much information.
You're welcome.
And I wanted to say, um, that I'm really excited about the educational team leaders. We've had the opportunity to meet a number of them, and, um, to your point, I can't evaluate them relative, relative to their professional, educational aspect, but from personal sides, having the opportunity to interact with them, I'm pleased, because, um, they need to have that ability throughout their whole life, um, and how they can interact with others, and, and they seem incredible. So-
They are.
I'm, I'm really excited about that.
Thank you.
And, um, also, I'm really pleased to hear about the Wilson Reading Certification. Um, I learned more about that a little bit on a personal basis, having a, a student that has had some difficulties around reading, and that program is so strong, and I'm really pleased to hear that it's not just special education teachers, but some of the, um, general teachers that are taking part of that, and I'm hoping that that is an opportunity where we can do a lot of that peer-to-peer training, um, because it's an incredible program, and I'm just really excited that, that's moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Brodenhenge.
I already, sorry, I already know, like-
Like, who's gonna ask the questions, right?
Catherine, Michelle, Heidi.
So, seventeen teachers, and are they, it's primarily at the elementary level?
Uh, no, I, I don't have the exact numbers, but we do have some from the middle school and the high school level as well.
Because, I mean, my kids have been out of the district for a little while now, but I remember there being like two people in the district that did it.
Yes.
And to have so many, it's amazing.
Yes.
Right. So that wasn't really a question. I guess I sorta was a question, but, um, I was like, when I read that, I was like, wow, that's amazing.
Ms. Matthews.
I too, I'm going to echo, thank you for your-
And I'm sorry for your loss.
Oh, no, thank, thank you.
Question regarding, I, on your bullet point number two, regarding, um, current practices and accessibility of reports. I know in priors, and I'm the first to admit that special education is my weakest area in anything, and so I'll only ask questions, because I don't know any of it. Um, I know there was a concern at one point with staff who are servicing kids and the, having the inability to access the reports that they needed to.
Mm-hmm.
And I assume that that's been looked into and rectified.
So, a, a couple of things that I had learned this summer with Linda Weintraub, um, what's her official title? Sorry.
We know who she is.
Uh, we, we found that we could attach documents to, um, the student record in Aspen, so, uh, we are now attached, uh, scanning and uploading, uh, any of the evaluations to the student record, so any staff that has, um, access to that student now will have access to any of the reports. Um, and we're working on the, the feature of when an IEP is signed, that there's an email notice that comes out of Aspen to any of the staff that are working with that child, to notify them that this, that that IEP is now active. So we're doing a lot of things electronically.
Well, which is, is critical, because obviously, if you're working with a child and don't know what the needs may be, or things to address, it becomes useless at that point, whatever, all the hard work. Um, and then, on regarding the post-grad and the pathways program, and again, um, I know a lot was put into that, moving the program several years ago. And so I, I guess it was a little bit of a red flag to see that there was this big concern over it again, and-
Not, not so much a concern, that, uh, there's quite a few things that John and I feel that we can strengthen, as far as, um, making sure that students are gaining as many independent skill-
can strengthen as far as making sure that students are gaining as many independent skills as possible, as well as vocational opportunities.
Well, and I know in prior times, we had talked about just its location, and especially for the post-grad opportunities or being in the community, and is it really the best place for them to be so that they can get on a bus and learn how to, you know, go do lingerie or whatever. I mean, yes, you know, so I didn't know if that was in the total package of what you're addressing.
It could be. For me, it's too early to.
Oh, of course, of course.
But no, but, you know, doing the assessment, evaluating it, and looking to see, you know, over time, you know, what, how can we improve, you know, any of our, all of our programs can use improvement anywhere, any district. So we're going to focus on these first, see what we can do to strengthen and improve those, and then, you know.
And I'd love to hear that the transition specialist is going to work with 12th graders, just general population that have an IEP, because so many parents, I hear, I have a senior as well, but, you know, saying, you mean, you can have an IEP in college and you can have, you know, and it's accommodations? It's like, yes. But they think that they go off into the.
Right, it translates into a 504, but yes.
But they don't realize that that can continue.
Right, that self-advocacy and making sure that they know what they have available.
Exactly. So, great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Sinisey.
Last comment was, I actually, I wanted to echo Ms. Bodenhendler. I'm really sorry for your personal loss, and that was something, that story, I didn't know him, but it definitely hit me just hearing about it. And now the comments that you've shared about his kind of three points, I have to say, wrote them down, because they're three things to definitely focus on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Entain a motion to approve the minutes from August 29, 2017.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Pose, carries. Entain a motion to accept the minutes of September 12, 2017.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Pose, carries. Public participation? Any public participation? Public participation? Seeing none. Azabeth Valley Collaborative Representative.
That's you.
That's you.
Not doing that. I think every year, we've taken a vote to appoint the superintendent to the Azabeth Valley Collaborative as our representative.
Motion to appoint Madam Superintendent.
Motion made and seconded to approve the superintendent. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Pose, carries. Congratulations.
Thank you. I gladly, I gladly accept.
Regardless of whether you accepted, we were going to vote you.
Delighted, delighted, I should say, to take the role.
Mr. Bergeron.
Transfers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have three transfers tonight. I was trying to keep them at a lower amount than last year. They're pretty prescriptive, but I just want to go over them if you'll allow me just a moment. The first is Principal Cleary is requesting a transfer to pay for additional accounting one and accounting two textbooks, because he's had more students enroll in business. So he's taking the money from his general supply account and moving it to the business department. The second is the Instructional Technology Director is requesting a transfer to cover conference dues and registration for a conference. Our dues and conferences line for the district is not as robust as we would like it to be. So usually when we do items like this, the site managers and department managers have to take it from their own budgets and move it to the conference and dues line, so that way we can afford to go to those things. And the third was just to fix some budget corrections. The nurse at Hildreth, when I was hired last year, was placed on the wrong step. So while we did fix it, we fixed it after the budget was approved, voted, and put into place. So we did have to adjust it. We did adjust it last year and took care of it, but this year, we had to, I have to adjust it with a transfer from salary reserve. Additionally, in the budget, we did not, I did not, I should say, put the right amount of stipend in for one of the clerks at Richer. And additionally, we hired Division Specialists at an amount higher than what we budgeted for. But as I can tell you, we're already saving a lot of money on that, because we were spending close to $130,000 in contracted services for the vision program. And now, since we've been able to move that in-house, we don't need any of those contracted services. So that has actually been a huge savings to our budget. So my recommendation is to move money from salary reserve to cover those items for tonight. I'm not sure if there's any questions I can answer on those.
Any questions from the committee? Entain a motion.
Motion to approve the transfers.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Pose, carries.
Thank you.
Policies.
Thank you very much. So tonight, we are bringing forward the policies that we had reviewed the end of August. And so, we had done a first read during our first meeting end of August, and now these are moving forward for hopefully a vote tonight. So I'd like to ask for policy number 1.020, which is staff recognition, to actually be removed. That's per our policy, our subcommittee policy group had a discussion about this. And since this is really something which, of course, we are doing, it seems kind of a little odd to actually have a policy about it, because why wouldn't we want to be recognizing all of our incredible staff on a constant basis, as opposed to having a policy that says it? But, so, I'd like to make a motion to remove this policy.
To delete the policy?
To delete it altogether.
Motion made and seconded to delete policy 1.010.
No, 1.020.
She went out of order.
I went out of order.
She went out of order.
She went out of order.
It's okay. I did the removal first.
1.020. Motion made and seconded to delete policy 1.020. Any discussion on that? Seeing none. All those in favor? Pose, carries.
Okay, thank you very much. So now I'll go down in order to make it easier on the approvals, hopefully. So, policy 1.010, which is the mission statement. We had some minor amendments and really just moved around the order of the belief statements. So that is what we had done. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended policy 1.010.
Motion made and seconded to approve policy 1.010. Any discussion? Ms. Matthews.
Well, one, there's a typo. Number three, should be number three, not number two again.
Two-twos.
Two-twos. But I guess, I have a difficult time with what I feel is just a rubber stamp on this. And the reason I'm saying that is, I think the mission statement is something that is, has to be built and needs to evolve and needs to change. And looking at the fact that it was last approved in 1999, and usually mission statements are built from a committee and a district and, you know, and I just kind of feel like this is just a, let's throw a rubber stamp on something that we've had for 30 years, and.
And if I can respond, we actually had that discussion. What we're trying to do is at least bring something up to date, which is why we had made a minor amendment. And I know that the superintendent and Ms. Murphy had had some discussions around the table, that they wanted to proceed on having discussions of taking a look at the mission statement and maybe doing some revisions. But our thought was to let it lie right now, which it's been lying since 99, you know, I mean.
It's dead. Don't beat a dead horse any further. I mean.
Well, but we did feel that there were a number of points on here that were aligned with what we are doing and how, what we've currently already started to set up goal-wise, so it wasn't completely out of line.
But to that point of deleting something that we should be doing all the time, the recognition.
Yep.
That makes sense, because that's part of our, that has turned into our mode. But this, I don't know, I'm not going to vote for it, only, but doesn't need my vote, but I, because I think it's something that needs more than just rubber stamping it right now.
Agreed. And I think that the superintendent and the assistant superintendents have had conversation that they are going to go ahead and start working on that, but I completely.
I just think by putting today's date of the seven, you know, year 2017, it's going to just fall away again. It has the potential.
It does.
Just like these did since 1999.
I hear you.
If this is not in the district improvement plan, and I'm trying to think, Mary and I have been going through that to get it ready for presentation, might we put that in there? I would find the appropriate standard as inaction.
I think it would be appropriate.
Would that make you, would that?
I would feel more.
Yeah, well, no, yeah, I just, I, it doesn't satisfy this piece of it, but it doesn't matter to me, I'm one of seven, so I get it.
I'm going to move forward with it, because I think, I think most of this aligns, so.
That's fine.
Any other questions? On the motion to approve as amended, policy number 1.010. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Pose, carries.
Okay, thank you. Next up would be policy number 1.200, which is the constitutionally protected prayer in public schools. So I'd like to make a motion to approve as amended.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Posed, carries.
Okay.
You want to discuss?
It's opposed.
Carry on.
Okay. So, policy number 7.950, which is the high school promotion slash graduation requirements. As many of you all know, this one has been retooled a number of times and is going to be continuing to evolve, but this was getting us up to track at the moment. So I'd like to make a motion to approve this policy with the amendments as noted.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Ms. Matthews.
One, I believe in 2A, it should be building administration has the discretion? Or the building administrator has the discretion? One or the other, that doesn't seem to be the right tense.
So I'll look back to the superintendent as to what your wish might be on that, because is it something?
A building administrator.
A building administrator?
Is that satisfied?
It just, it doesn't seem, because what is building administrator? Building administration sounds like it's a collective agreement. I think in some cases, it could be a singular. A building administrator, I would suggest.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing is, and I may be, second paragraph of what they must carry and pass, including passing English and math, starting with the class of 2018. This is the class of 2018, so the rule's never going to change again. So I don't think we actually need to know, I don't think we any longer have to say the class of 2018. Yes, when this was originally written, they were freshmen.
Right. I think we should be fine if we remove that indicator.
I mean, yes?
That's fine, we can, we could remove that indicator, and that way, that's one less thing to have to worry about.
Just like we took all the indicators out for the previous ones.
Yeah, no, and that's really what we were trying to do, is remove a lot of the, you know, the year.
Right, right.
Notifications, but you're right, that's not something that we have to necessarily have in there.
And then I guess my last question, and it's really not a, I'm sure you probably had the conversation while you were discussing this change of policy, is the information technology competency exam slash part of the STEM curriculum slash, we shouldn't be giving it in ninth grade any longer, it should be in fourth grade, I'm pushing it down even So, I mean, I would see it again being on the DIP, right? I mean, something that, it's part of evaluating the curriculum, evaluating.
Well, this, yeah, this technol, we did have this discussion. It is something that we know is going to be phasing out, but yet we weren't there yet.
Right, okay. That's why I said, I mean.
Yeah, so this is an area which I would assume within the next couple of years, and I'm not going to say by next year, you know, but shortly, that will be removed. But we weren't in a place that, that could, as of yet, since it currently just happened, and don't know the plans for next year, so. But I hear your point, and it was a, it was a discussion around the table.
Eventually, it will be obsolete anyway.
Yes, it will.
Because students are learning younger and younger in the classroom, embedded in the curriculum.
Prior to kindergarten.
All set? Motion made and seconded to approve as amended. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Pose, carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the school committee and the behavior texts for the period ending June 30, 2018, a one-year agreement.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Pose, carries. Reports to subcommittees? No reports to subcommittees? Nice. Members forum.
Yeah, wait, sorry.
We do, going back to.
Can you do it again?
We're, no, we're starting, we're starting, we're starting negotiations. With the MAA. We're opening, no, we're opening with the parent educators on October 17.
17.
17.
Yep, ground rules.
Yes. Ground rules. And we're waiting. My calendar's filling up?
Thank you. Members forum. You back a policy again?
No, I'm on to members forum, you just called it.
Thank you.
So if I could ask the superintendent, if you could have some conversation with Mr. Cleary, I would love to provide you with a few questions, if I may, like via email, to make sure that I'm actually articulating it appropriately. But around scheduling questions specifically more around AP courses and availability, understanding breakdowns of how many kids in their sophomore year, in their junior year, in their senior year are actually taking APs and then multiple APs? Because there have been some community members that have reached out to me with concerns about not necessarily being able to get into some of these AP courses. And obviously, it's not my area of expertise. I can't speak to it at all, but I would like to make sure that when we are doing solid promotion, which I think, you know, Mr. Riley and a group last night at curriculum night, were doing a great job promoting the incredible academic pathways that we do have available, which include, you know, the college credit courses and the AP courses. I want to make sure that we are having the right availability, and also understanding that we're meeting our hopes of not necessarily having so much competition for classes that kids are not getting in and then ending up with study halls.
Sure.
So if I could hopefully forward some things to you, and then if you could speak to Mr. Cleary, I'd really appreciate if he could come and speak to everyone, because I think the committee would really be interested, as well as the public.
Thank you. If you could fashion your questions and send them maybe to Mrs. Bodenhendler and then to me.
I certainly can.
And would you like me to ask Principal Cleary for his availability October 10?
I would appreciate that, because I think that would really give everybody the right opportunity to see the questions, add something if they have questions, and then really have a good, healthy conversation with him.
Actually, I think Assistant Principal Bishop should be here as well, and maybe director, Supervised Director of Guidance.
That would be helpful.
So what, just to clarify, you're also looking at the number of requests for AP and the number that were filled.
Right.
Maybe historically, is the sharing any different than others?
Well, but I, historically different, but I would also say, from a planning standpoint, and I think your point about guidance is really important, because I think as, we just had curriculum night last night, a lot of families, you know, the students and the families sit there and start to make plans about the trajectory for their students. And I want to make sure that we're in the right position to be able to help on that trajectory and how we work with guidance. trajectory, and how we work with guidance, the assistant principals and the principal, and making sure also, from a budget standpoint, that we are providing the right amount of funding to support the staff that may be needed, to make sure that we have that availability. To Ms. Bodenhendler's point, there are always going to be choices that have to be made, but classes that are complementary towards certain studies, we want to make sure that we are having enough opportunities provided so that they can do that. Again, we also can't always be running classes where there may be two, three, four students, and then how are we making that happen in other ways?
Perfect.
Okay?
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Other members? Matthews.
I have two things. One is a little bit of a piggyback on Ms. Hennessy's. I want to thank the administration at the high school for last night's curriculum night. That was my eighth and final one. No, excuse me, ninth, ninth and final one, because my older one did eighth grade there. So it was my ninth and final. And it went, I thought, very smoothly. One of the things, and Heidi, you might be able to answer or speak to this as well, the one thing I happened to notice last night, as a parent of a senior, were the size of classes. I was shocked at how large these classes are, for the first time in nine times doing this. There was no class under 23, and some reaching more like 30. And usually, in past history, senior classes tend to be smaller, because they've started to branch out and whatever, but every class was 23, 24, 27, in some cases.
Yeah, I'm in two, like, AP classes that aren't really commonly taken, physics and then calc BC, and even those have like 10, 15 kids in it, which the teachers are surprised about.
Well, and I know a chemistry class, there, there's no seats in the room. They're sitting at lab tables instead, so.
Partially a good thing. I mean, we're trying to encourage students.
But not just, not just AP, this is general, so I guess my thing with, is also, how many sections are we running? What are our average-sized classes? Because.
If you would piggyback on to those questions.
Yeah, that's right.
Because I looked at, I look biweekly at class sizes, enrollment.
We were always concerned on the elementary, and as I said, I was kind of like, whoa.
Case load per teacher, I thought, overarching was low. So there may be an imbalance in the way it's scheduled, but caseload-wise, I thought it was not huge.
Well, and that may be a, you know, an effect from the change in the schedule.
And that's, I guess, the reason.
Right.
I understand that it's not us to be involved in the scheduling. I'm trying to understand, though, the impact it's having in regards to kids and their availability of taking classes and class sizes and such, so, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
And I signed the warrant.
Fantastic. Ms. Bodenhendler.
Thank you. Do you, can you remind me what you said earlier in the meeting regarding the MASC resolutions?
I said they were in the information's handout section of my report, so that you could get a pre-read before the actual vote and heated debate here on those resolutions and the selection of the delegate on the October 10.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's what I wanted, to make sure that they were on.
Even though Cecilio told me already that because I wasn't going to be here, he probably would all dump it on me.
Oh, October 10?
Yeah.
Any other members? Seeing none.
Move to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, pose carries. Thank you very much.
I picked out her purse.